So it's just a little before 7:00, so let's go ahead and get started. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Please all stand with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Denise Sherwood, will you do roll call? I am uncertain where Councilwoman Corningay is at. Could somebody please excuse her?
Madam Mayor, make a motion to excuse Councilwoman Corningay.
Okay, have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second to excuse Jermaine Corningay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on to the agenda. The only change that we have in the agenda is that we are going to pull the new business, the quarterly finance and budget report. It is not quite ready yet. That'll be on the next council agenda, so approval of the agenda minus new business. Do I have a motion?
I move that we accept the agenda as stated, removing the budget report.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Denley and seconded by Councilwoman Kinser. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda items 1 through 10.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Aye.
We had a motion by Councilwoman Couch and seconded by Councilwoman Denley. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? All right, and Councilwoman Corningay is here. Hi Jermaine.
I had a hard time finding parking.
Yeah, as I can imagine. Very good, very good. Okay. So, we have a special event tonight, and I would imagine that probably once it's done, the room will be empty. But this is great. Love having you here. We're going to have the swearing-in of the new firefighter/paramedics. And before I call them up, I just want to say that this transition was actually very, very successful. We, before anybody else, before Mount Vernon and Burlington, actually started our shift at 9:00 a.m. on Christmas Eve morning. So at 9:00 a.m., they all came on, and 15 hours later, Mount Vernon and Burlington brought theirs on, so we were ahead of the game. The transition went very smooth. The CVAA ambulance, formerly known as Medic 1, is now Medic 55. And because the Seager Woolley Fire Department is stacked to allow split-unit responses, one paramedic EMT, one paramedic and one EMT when appropriate, Seager Woolley Fire Department also has the ability to operate up to two additional medic units, which would be Med 5519 and 5529, depending upon the staffing. So we now have a minimum of seven firefighters on staff at all times, and this is a new era. As the new year came in, Seager Woolley entered a new era. And it's nothing like we had anticipated in the near future, but here it is. We have joined the big boys, you might say. We're playing with the big boys. So this is fantastic. This is really great. So I would like to call up, because we will now do the pinning ceremony, Christina Gooden, Keegan Jenkins, Skylar Anderson, Matt Sias, Isaac Spiel, Jennifer Hahn, Megan Gardlily, and Brad Shandakoff. There we go, okay. Maybe I'll just stand here. So I'm going to be swearing you in. It's my honor. Welcome each and every one of you. Please repeat after me, except when I say "say your name," actually say "your name." So I say your name. Do you solemnly swear? That I am a citizen of the United States?
That I am a citizen of the United States.
And of the State of Washington?
And of the State of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington?
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And will, to the best of my judgment?
And will, to the best of my judgment?
Skill and ability?
Skill and ability.
Truly, faithfully, and impartially perform?
Truly, faithfully, and impartially perform?
The duties of firefighter, paramedic?
The duties of firefighter, paramedic.
In and for the city of Seager Woolley, Skagit County, Washington. In and for the city of Seager Woolley. As such duties are prescribed by law?
As such duties are prescribed by law.
So help me God. Very nice. Congratulations. So we're going to have the families come up to do the pinning. And I'm going to ask you if you would come up and sign if you go. So first is Keegan here.
So while they're doing the signing, I told the mayor I'd just take a couple of seconds. I just want to say, this has been an incredible six months. We started this six months ago. This wasn't even on our horizon. We were busy building a garage to house our extra firetracks. And we went from trying to build a garage to building an entire paramedic program and changing the outlook of this department for the all time to come. It'll never be the same as it was before, but we are excited for the change. We're excited for the new opportunities that this is going to give us, and we're excited to have this group here working with us now. I mean, it's just been a fun time so far, the first, what, eight, nine days? We've had a blast so far. These are a great bunch of people to work with, and hopefully they'll never come to see you, but if they come to see you, they're great people. So again, let's give them all another big hand. Keegan, did you need help signing? No, okay. You're good.
Yeah, not a lot of icing, too. Yeah, not a lot of icing for me either.
So we'll go ahead and move on. And tonight, we also have a presentation of the SWIFT Center. It's a draft analysis of brownfield cleanup alternatives and EPA cleanup grant application. Patsy, is that where you?
Well, thank you for having us. As you know, we wonderfully took over the SWIFT Center from the State of Washington on July 1st of this summer, with all of your help. Now we're working on all the parts, putting it together, so we can repurpose it for economic development purposes, but also there's some cleanup that needs to be done. And we've known that. We've been working through the process. Mal Foster and Alongi have been doing that work for us, doing the analysis, trying to understand what's there. Through that process, we've gotten some grants, EPA grants, Pollution Liability Insurance Agency grants, that sort of thing, to help make that happen. And tonight, they're going to talk about an assessment that we've done of some of the contaminants that came through the EPA, and then also the EPA application for some more cleanup. So I'm going to introduce Michael Streger, who's going to come talk to you about that.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Patsy, and thank you, Council. This is Carolyn Wise. She's one of our lead scientists, also working on the project. The bulb is out for the projector that's close, so we have a few slides. We'll reference them in general, but if you want to look at them in any more detail, it'll be available for you afterward, just load it up on the computer there. As Patsy mentioned, we just wanted to take a moment to update you, beginning of the new year. We've been making a lot of progress in the redevelopment of the SWIFT Center. I want to give you an update of what's been achieved so far on the environmental side, and then what's coming up for 2019. Let's see. I'll click these, just so that the audience can see through. But I always love showing a few photos of the site. It's such an amazing, charismatic place. It's not working.
Yeah, the bulb's burnt out.
Yeah. But for those of you who've been there, you know, they've got these beautiful buildings. The whole landscape was designed by the Olmsteads, the same landscape architecture firm that designed Central Park and Seattle's Park Department. And the whole thing is listed on the National Register of Historic Places, so it's a real treasure up there. And the big things, you know, there's been a lot of great site improvements that have been undertaken already by the Port, the city. Mark Frymore and the Public Works Department's done a great job with Fruit Del Road, making the improvements to safety and circulation through there. And also, there's the plans now underway for the park space next to the pond, which it was kind of interesting, one of the pleasant surprises going through the planning process that we did a couple of years ago, was to learn how important that pond was to the local community for the fishing derby. And so about 10 acres of the property's been dedicated to the city for purposes of park, and that's now in the planning phase for parking improvements and access improvements. On the environmental side, guys remember that this is not an old lumber mill site, but as what was essentially a functioning self-contained city up there, it does have some environmental concerns that we want to be aware of as we move through the redevelopment. There was a power plant that, you know, brought shipments of coal in to fuel the place. There are other operations that we'll talk about as we go through. So we wanted to make sure that we're just careful about that as we go through the redevelopment and are aware of it. And the State Department of Ecology has been very supportive of this process. They gave some of the initial funding that the Port and city used to just kick-start the planning on feasibility analysis of what could happen with that property back in 2013 and 2014. And they've continued on with that support. And we've also been able to obtain some funding from the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, some federal grant dollars to help follow up on that work. And this environmental sampling work is kind of iterative. You go out and you look at areas that you think historically you might have had some concerns, like the old power plant. You do some looking, and then you kind of feel your way out from there. Say, we found something over here, and now we need to kind of draw a circle around it and understand how far and why the contamination lies. So over the course of the last year, we used those EPA funds to do that further analysis, and then to kind of pinpoint what actions need to be taken to allow the site to be redeveloped in a safe, responsible way. And this is not, this can be hard for the council members to see, but essentially, we've broken the site down into seven areas that we have concerns about, so seven areas of concern. And taken individually, they're all, we consider to be pretty simple things to take care of, like lead paint chipping off the building creates lead in the soil, and that needs to be addressed. But together with all seven, it starts to sound like a big complicated thing. We try to keep as manageable as possible. We want to be clear and let everyone know kind of how we're walking through each of these pieces. So with that, I'm going to ask Carolyn to kind of walk through each of those seven different areas, tell you what that historic concern was, what we know about it, and what the plan is for addressing it as the site gets cleaned up and redeveloped.
Trying to stand and position myself around here. So the first area that we looked at was the former laundry building. We identified chlorinated solvents in the soil, groundwater, and sub-slab soil vapor. And this was the result of historical laundry practices that were done at this building. And we found out that they were pretty localized, and just in the northeast corner of the building, in pretty manageable area. But we do want to look at some potential remedies for preventing exposure to the occupants in the building, which are the Cascade Job Corps. And so some potential remedy options are putting a vapor barrier on the sub-slab of the building to prevent volatiles from coming up into the indoor air, as well as doing some in-situ injections to help remediate some of that material that's still in the soil and groundwater. And then also just doing some monitoring to make sure that concentrations aren't changing over time. So that's the first area. Not sure. Oh, that computer? It's all around, yeah. And the second area is the powerhouse building. And we just found a very small area of petroleum hydrocarbons in the shallow soil, right behind the powerhouse. And that's actually covered with asphalt material, so there's no direct exposure. But we want to make sure that in case there's any kind of redevelopment that's occurring around that building in the future, that that soil is managed appropriately. So preparing a soil management plan would be part of that remedy in that area. But it is a very, very small area. All right. And the third area is just the lead in soil. As Mike mentioned, the buildings are pretty old on the property, and they do have lead paint on the exterior of some of these buildings. And over time, with weathering, some of those paint chips do fall into the shallow soil immediately adjacent to the buildings. And so that area is pretty small and localized around those buildings, and we took a look at just three buildings in particular, and we found that the concentrations are slightly above human health criteria. However, they're very limited in the area around the building. And so as part of redevelopment of those buildings, because we don't want to redevelop or clean up an area and just have more paint chips flick off, we want to make sure that once we redevelop those buildings, we clean up the soil around those buildings as we redevelop them. So having a soil management plan as part of the redevelopment process will be used in those areas. There were a few isolated areas of arsenic and lead in the soil, and that just, the nature of a property that's been, you know, had so much history, that just, you know, there's probably little flecks of paint occasionally. But we found two isolated areas that had some arsenic and lead in the soil. So as part of the remedy of that, we're looking at just excavating those areas. So it's a pretty small area. It's probably less than a half acre of soil, and it's all in shallow soil. And because this property is surrounded by beautiful habitat, and plants and animals use the space, we wanted to make sure that we were being protective of those plants and animals, and they're particularly susceptible to metals in shallow soil. So we wanted to assess ecological risk to those critters. And so we assessed 17 individual areas across the property for metals, and found just a couple of areas that had one or two metals above ecological criteria. And so this is the one area that has those, a couple exceedances. And so as part of the next step strategy, we're going to be looking at doing a net environmental benefit analysis, and that will be just assessing to make sure that, you know, we don't want to disturb an ecosystem that's already well-developed. There's trees here, plants and animals are using the space, but if we need to, we want to, you know, protect those animals. So there could be the potential for using that area as a parking lot to potentially cap that soil, and so prevent a risk for those plants and animals. And so we'll be looking at that with the remedial investigation and feasibility study that we'll be potentially proposing for the property. So that'll be a next step for that area. All right. And so the maintenance building, it's pretty close to the powerhouse. They had underground storage tanks here, and there are some impacts of petroleum hydrocarbons in the soil and groundwater. However, this area's being assessed by PLEA, the Pollution Liability Insurance Agency. And so they're taking the lead on remediating this area through excavation and application of oxygen-releasing compounds.
How big are those tanks?
I think, like, they were only 500 to 1,000 gallon tanks. Pretty small, just for fueling vehicles on the property back in the day and things like that.
Digging them out instead of pumping them with the slurry?
That's more of the PLEA's realm.
The tanks were already removed.
Yeah.
They had the contamination that was left underground beneath them, so they're going back in to full excavation to get that out.
Thank you for the clarification.
No worries. All right, okay. So the last area is regarding lead and arsenic in groundwater on the property. We do have, just in the geology of the area, we have some naturally occurring elevated concentrations of lead and arsenic. And so as part of a next step for this area, we're going to be evaluating those concentrations through completing a full remedial investigation feasibility study for the site.
And we're trying to leverage as much outside funding as we can. So we'll be applying for another grant from the EPA to do some of those cleanup actions, especially on that laundry building, and then the area where they have metals in the shallow soil, that excavation. So we're in the process right now of putting together an application. That's actually available for public review. It's on the Port's website. It kind of lays out these options, and the goal would be to submit the application here by the end of the month, and assuming that the federal government cranks back up, they'll be able to review it. And if they're funded, we'll hear back from them in the summertime and be able to start this work as early as 2018. So by this year, next year, those two priority areas of the laundry building, where Job Corps is, you know, planning to do some renovation activity, use that space, and then that shallow soil, where there are fields where, you know, students or the people can be walking through it. We're going to get those addressed first, then those other places are going to be longer-term management. So we're trying to leverage the federal funding, and we'll also apply to the state for additional grant funding as well. So a lot of progress being made, and you're going to see literally excavators on the site in the next few weeks here, taking out that soil near that underground storage tank, and then hopefully next summer, dealing with these other areas of concern. Okay? I just wanted to put the link up there to the Port's website, that if anyone wants to take a look at that grant application, it's open for public review.
Are you taking questions?
Sure.
All right, so I had three points of concern?
Yeah.
That go around the maintenance building and the power plant?
Yeah.
And, you know, in the past, it's been the generally accepted principle to, the solution to pollution is dilution, and we're dealing with a little bit of that now in our current situation of your remediation plan. So I didn't hear things like polychlorated biphenols, you know, the power plant, which is good, and I did not hear methylalkyl ketone at the laundry. So, and you talked about chromium. Is that hexavalent chromium, or what kind of metals are we looking at?
It's not speciated, but it's either hexavalent or trivalent chromium. It's very, very low detections, though, that are slightly above ecological risk criteria.
Okay, the ecological risk criteria is going to be your MOTC tables here in the State of Washington?
Yeah.
Okay. So where do you speculate the chromium is coming from?
A lot of these are potentially from herbicide, pesticide use in the past, right? It was landscaped grounds.
Right, okay. Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you for coming. Up next, Hillary Young, is she here? Ah, hi Hillary. Hillary from Pioneer Center North has a presentation for us. Welcome, Hillary.
So I thought my slides would be in front of me, so I apologize. Some of it's probably kind of small to see from there. But I want to thank you so much for the opportunity to come and talk about Pioneer Center North. I didn't know I was on at the same time as the SWIFT Center update, which is where we're located, so that's really timely. So thank you. As you mentioned, I'm Hillary Young. I am Vice President of Advocacy and Philanthropy for Pioneer Human Services. So, I'm not used to having to do this at the same time. Let me see. More than click? There we go. All right, there we go. So before I jump into Pioneer Center North, I just wanted to give a quick overview of Pioneer Human Services as a whole. And some of you are familiar with Pioneer Human Services, and for some of you, you may not be. But Pioneer is one of the largest and oldest nonprofits in the State of Washington. We've actually been operating in the realm of reentry for people coming back to the community out of jail and prison, and also offering treatment and housing options for the last 55 years. We're headquartered out of Seattle. We offer a range of programs, from residential reentry to low-barrier housing, a full range of treatment options, and then also we're a training provider and an employer. We operate in about 50 programs across the state. And here locally, we actually do a lot of work and are looking at even increasing our presence in the community. So not specific to Seager Woolley, Pioneer Center North is the only program that we have here within the city. But within Skagit County, we also operate the Skagit County Crisis Center. We provide treatment services and community transition planning in the jail. We also operate Transitions House in Mount Vernon, which is often for people either coming out of homelessness or out of jail. And then we also, I'm excited to share, are looking at expanding into outpatient treatment this early this year. So we really want to be able to offer the full continuum of care for people who need treatment in the Skagit County area. So I also have some historic photos. Pioneer Center North is sort of an institution. You know, it's been here, operating on the North Town campus for 40-plus years. And over that time, you know, it started out 40 years ago as the first involuntary treatment center in the state. It was really targeted to people who had life-threatening alcoholism. Over the years, that has evolved, and really started to serve people who struggle with a variety of substance abuse, disorders. Most people at PCN have always been the hardest to serve, so it's rarely anyone's first stop for treatment. People usually have repeated treatment episodes, have not been successful in those treatment programs. Many are homeless or unemployed. Most have a history of arrest and/or incarceration. And then also just the host of health problems that go along with long-term addiction, right? So that's liver failure, that's hepatitis. I see you nodding. Councilmember Kinser, you see this every day. We're talking about a population that is really fragile, really sick, and really needs intensive treatment, and that's what we've been doing there on that campus for about 40 years. We moved into the larger Douglas Building in 1994, so since that time, we've served about 1,000 people a year through the treatment programs, and over 80% have successfully completed the program, which, given the population, is a pretty high number. So a lot of people have come through PCN over the last four decades, and we're really honored to be part of that recovery for people, and to have been a part of this community for that long. So decades of stability. We're up there on the campus, sort of going along, doing treatment. And then in 2016, a lot of things sort of came together that really changed the future for PCN, and that's really what I want to focus on here tonight. And I think, Madam Johnson, why you invited me here is to talk about sort of what we're doing now and what the future looks like. So, let's see, 2016. As I mentioned, we used to do involuntary treatment at Pioneer Center North. That act was frankly gutted by the legislature in 2016, so people were no longer being involuntarily committed. At the same time, the entire treatment landscape changed, and there was an integration At the same time, the entire treatment landscape changed, and there was an integration of substance abuse and mental health treatment, and all of that work shifted from the state to local, what they call behavioral health organizations, and with that Medicaid funding. And so that really changed the requirements and the length of state of the program, really everything about the program changed at that point. And then here locally, at the same time, there was, of course, the effort underway to really look at the best use of the campus. And it was determined, you know, through that process, that PCN was not a good fit for the future vision for the campus. And so we were expecting that we would have to close that program when the campus transitioned away from the state and over to the port in June 30, 2018. The timing could not have been worse for that. Locally, there have been plans to help replace those treatment beds in the community, but all of that was delayed because the state legislature didn't pass the capital budget. And so really, the state would have lost 141 treatment beds at the height of an opiate epidemic, and we just didn't think that made a lot of sense. And so we did call on local leaders. Skagit County Commissioner Ken Dollstedt was a great champion for us. That was when I had the opportunity to meet Mayor Johnson, and she really said if there was anything she could do to help us preserve that program, because she knows how important it is to the community, not just the treatment, but also the jobs. We employ 95 to 100 people at that program, and until those new facilities are built up, there's nowhere for the people, or the clients or the employees to go. And so luckily, the community really did rally, and we were able to work with the port as they took ownership, I guess, is it technically ownership? Thank you. Of the port, of that campus, to sign a three-year extension so that we could stay at PCN until these new facilities can be built up in the community and we can have a smooth transition so that the community isn't left without treatment options. So this is really an eye chart, and I apologize. I thought it would be a little closer. So as we thought about sort of this last chapter for PCN, we really thought about how can we best use this facility over the next three years to meet the needs of the community and to help address the increasing opiate use that we see across the country, but particularly in this area, you've been really hard hit. So we decided that we would build on our whole-person treatment approach, which doesn't just look at relapse management and things to sort of keep somebody sober, but also dealing with sort of those underlying issues, grief, the loss, just life skill development. If you haven't lived as part of a community in a healthy way in a really long time, that is important work that you have to do, and that is a big part of treatment to really help people be successful when they leave. But we also are using this as a way to launch some innovative programs. So testing first, a co-occurring substance abuse and mental health treatment program. Too often, people either can get mental health treatment, or they can get substance abuse. Not that often are those two happening in isolation from one another, and so really wanting to be able to treat those together so that people get the best out of both treatments and have a better chance for success in the community. And then most recently, we launched an opiate use disorder treatment program, and this is really targeted to people who are struggling with opiate addiction. And as part of this program, I would say a lot of it builds on, again, the foundations of what we've always done at PCN, but it also looks at offering Medicaid-assisted treatment and offering actually patient choice in that. Oftentimes, when people go into a treatment program, they offer one, they might be able to do methadone, for instance. We offer three different tracks, which are the three FDA-approved medication options at this point. And then the biggest piece probably for long-term success for people is that there's comprehensive community transition support. So we have case managers who are helping people really connect to their outpatient provider so that when they leave, they don't stop getting treatment. They get the lower level of treatment that they need to support their recovery in the community, and then also housing. And 95% of people who've come through that program in these first few months have left with stable housing, which we just know sets them up to be more successful. So that's what we're doing there today, and then looking forward. Ultimately, the programs, I mean, PCN as a facility is not going to exist, you know, three years from now, but the programming and the training and the treatment that we provide, they will be moving out into the community in a variety of ways. One of those places will be the, oh, I should mention, we also had plans, and we've talked about this before, so I want to bring it up, that we were going to launch a six-year detox on the third floor of Pioneer Center North. The North Sound BHO did not get the funding they expected to support that program, and so instead of doing that there, we're actually have that on hold, and we are going to stand it up as part of the new stabilization campus that they're building on the plot of land that I believe is part of Sedro-Woolley right off of Highway 20, where they'll be building some secure treatment facilities. So as we look at the future, what you're going to see is less big institutions like PCN, which is sort of an old-school approach to treatment at this point, to more community-based, smaller treatment programs, and more specialized treatment programs that are really targeted to meet the needs of individuals. So stay tuned. We're going away as PCN over the next few years, but we definitely will still be in the community, and we really, that would not be the case if it were not for the support of local leaders, so we appreciate it.
Any questions for Hillary?
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Hillary.
Thank you, Hillary.
And Community Action, Joan Penny. Hi, Joan.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here, and as always, thank you for your service to the community and the county. I'm Joan Penny. I'm with Community Action, and the purpose for my visit tonight is to give you a status report on Community Action's efforts to relocate to 160 Cascade Place in Burlington. Barack Obama once said that democracy, the process of keeping democracy alive is not a straight line. It's full of zigs and zags. And I think about that speech when I think about how we've worked on this relocation project. It has been zigs and zags. It's not a straight line. There are politics around poverty, there are politics around homelessness, and we've definitely faced some of those in this campaign that we did not foresee. So with that, what we have decided, the Board of Directors, on December 20th, the current purchase and sale agreement that we've had with the owners of 160 Cascade Place was to expire on December 31, 2018. And they decided to let it expire versus extending it, and the reason being is that the terms were going to change, and that meant that we were going to have to put more money down each month to preserve that purchase and sale agreement. And as we looked at the analysis of what we've put forward already and the analysis of a very soft commercial market, we decided that what we had in the works could still set us on a course to still relocate at some point in 2019, but that we did not need to continue extending monthly the fees that we would eventually lose if we did not, first of all, sell our current buildings. It's kind of the yin and the yang. The reason that 160 Cascade Place is a great value to us is because the market is soft. Our biggest challenge is the market is soft, and we need to sell our buildings. And quite honestly, the moratorium that we faced in June, late spring through, actually about August, when we got our letter of clarification from the city of Burlington, we had four potential buyers of our buildings that walked. And the reason they walked is because they did not think we were going to be able to move with the moratorium. And until we got a zoning clarification from the city, the planning department, which we did, saying, yep, everything you want to do there is fine, we could not really move ahead. It just became really stagnant. So we have gone back to all of those potential buyers, and we also have some new interests in our buildings, but it's going to take time. And so what we've been doing is meeting with all of our donors, including you tonight, and bringing them up to speed on what we're doing. And so what that means is we've had meetings with about 50, 40 to 50 people right now. We've got three more major granters to meet with. We explained the crossroads that we were at, the decisions and the facts and the data around what we were having to do by December 31 of 2018. And we got a lot of great support from them to indeed let the purchase and sale agreement expire and to strategize around selling our buildings in a different way. So we're working on that right now. And what we have is we have a potential donor that has come forward that's willing to put a significant money down to buy our buildings and form an LLC with some other investors that could indeed buy our buildings, allow us then to relocate. The other great opportunity with where we're currently located is that it is in an opportunity zone, and you have some opportunity zones here in Sedro-Woolley. So there are some tax incentives for people that are interested in investing in our current buildings. So we're working on that, and here we are on January 9. We had another executive board meeting this morning to formulate that, and it is our intention to continue to focus on 160 Cascade Place. We do believe, after the years of looking at other locations, that this is still the best value at $100 a square foot for what we need. We do not see much of anything new on the market since we started looking three years ago, which makes sense because it's a soft commercial market, and it is still cost-prohibitive for us, especially with our mission to build brand-new. So we still think that this is the right location for us, and we are continuing to work in that direction. I must say, even with that, when we do get phone calls of interest about other places and other ideas that community members have, we don't turn those away. We do go and do our homework and consider the options and consider the programming that we'd need to relocate there. So that is, in short, an update, and I'm glad to take questions if I've made it too short of an update that I've assumed too much, so please let me know.
Are there any questions? Well, one thing I will say, because Jermaine and I are both very much aware of how much that new building or being in a new location is needed. We've seen the cramped quarters and the lack of privacy for your clients, and I know you want to bring dignity to your clients that already don't have a lot of that, it's not shown a lot of that. We appreciate everything that you are doing. We're still hanging in there with you, hoping for the best, and we appreciate you coming and letting us know, Joan.
Thank you very much for your perseverance and your leadership in this issue. It's very much appreciated. And I need to give a shout-out to Pioneer, too, because they're a common cause partner, and really, I know that they're serving a very important need, and we stand together with many other social service agencies in these difficult times of growing numbers in need. So again, thank you for standing with us, and I can report back at any time you have any other questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Joan.
Thank you.
And with that, we will move into staff reports. Chief Tucker?
Just two or three things here. Right before the first of the year, we had a shooting in an apartment complex here in town. Nobody reported it to us until several days later, and we went and recovered a slug from the apartment. We got some people following up on it, but we really don't have much in the line of leads. Don't know if it was a criminal act, accident, or what, but if we come up with any more, I'll brief you on that. Our code enforcement officer is working on a residence just off of State Street there at 11th. It's kind of a growing cancerous junkyard, and we're trying to get that cleaned up and working with the owner on that. But we're kind of going full-court press and hitting that from all angles. We've got, we had a fire response there for hazmat, leaking gas and oil, and she's working on that. We have, our new officer is going to be graduating on the 29th, and the mayor and Aaron and myself and Sergeant McElwath are going to go down and watch him get graduated. As long as all goes well, you always worry right there at the end, they have to pass all these tests and all this, but he seems to be doing just fine. We went down and had dinner with him. He doesn't appear to be limping too much. They get kind of a beating when they go to the academy, and it takes a little while when they get back to heal up. We've got a construction project going on in the office right now. Nathan and his crew are in, we're taking over an old kind of useless space. We were using it for storage, but we're actually going to convert it into, in addition to our evidence room. It's going to be a secure area for firearms, guns, drugs, anything like that. We're mandated to keep those things separate. Right now, all we have is like gym lockers that we lock stuff like that in, but now we're going to have a separate room that we can put lockers in, and we can put the firearms up in there. And then our final thing is Joanna started full-time right after the first of the year, jumped right in, and is doing great. We really appreciate the support and letting us get our part-timer in full-time. She is a great addition. She's one of the sunshiny faces you'll meet at our front window if you come during the day, and that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. And Joan?
Good evening. Thank you. Well, it's beginning of the year, so got a whole bunch of stuff going on. It's already time, we've received our paperwork from the state to begin the 2019 Office of Financial Management Population Estimate Updates. So we just have a little, a couple of forms to fill out now, but then we'll begin work in earnest in that in March, and April 1st will be our official count date, where we measure all the new permits and see how many new units we have in the city to help OFM determine how many people are in the city in 2019. Tonight, we're having a public hearing on a proposed annexation that's been going on for a while. I'm not going to talk about that now because we'll be going into it in detail in a little bit. However, just wanted to point out, we're also expecting another annexation request on East Jones Road that should be arriving any day, so we'll be getting this processed again, this time with a very limited area. It's kind of pinned in by the city, so it's just one potential parcel, so it'll be much easier process to go through and should go through a little bit faster. And then we've also received interest from a different property owner, or somebody looking at buying property in the urban growth area in the south end of town that might also like to annex into the city. So I don't know that that's going to go anywhere at this time, you know, it's just, they're just looking into a project, but suddenly we have potential for three annexations happening. We haven't had an annexation since 2016 when we annexed the Swift Center. And on a legislative front, we talked about this a bit at the staff meeting, but in the state legislature, there's a proposed change that would require cities to allow accessory dwelling units. Accessory dwelling units are also known as ADUs. This is just proposed now. It hasn't come to, since legislation, they haven't started their session completely yet. So we're keeping an eye on that. The curious point about it is that it would require cities to allow accessory dwelling units, which is a little bit different than what we'd like to see, you know, having the option to provide ADUs. And on top of that, it would be, they would allow, they're asking to allow two ADUs per property regardless of size of property. And then also potentially requiring that you can't have extra parking for ADUs. So this is interesting legislation. I don't know how far it's going to get, but we're keeping an eye on it because it could potentially have a significant impact in a small town. This seems like something that... This seems like something that might be a little bit better suited for a big city where there's transit and parking's potentially not an issue for people that live in a small accessory dwelling unit, but in Cedar Woolley where we don't have, in other small cities like us, where we don't have transit and trains and the ability to walk to work is easily, you know, parking is just a reality here. So those are some of the major highlights on that one that we're keeping an eye on. And I think, I think that's all I have. I've got a couple of more agenda items today, so you'll be hearing plenty from planning tonight.
I have a question for planning.
Sure.
Hey, John, I was looking at the report, and if I recall correctly, permits 2018-380 and 2018-382. You were waiting on a couple of documents. One was an internal document to see that that happened. But the one that I was interested in was from the SEPA. Have we, has that arrived? What do we figure the ETA is going to be on that?
You said 382?
I think it's 380. 380 and 382 are in the same property, 100 State Street?
Yes. The revised SEPA information has been received.
Great.
You'll be getting further updates on that.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
For the rest of staff.
All right. Thank you. Mark?
Thank you, Mayor. Not much new on the project front right now, the weather, things has held off projects and some middles on the wastewater plant. I handed out tonight to you something that we've been spending quite a bit of time on here, and that's getting ready for the legislative session for pursuing funding for the Jones-Johnliner Trail Road corridor projects. And so you have the update of our one page that we've been maintaining for this project for some years that we'll be taking forward to legislature when we discuss this project with them. We'll have a second one also. This is for the overall corridor projects, which is made up of eight separate projects, as you see on the one page, on the front page there. We also, the key project, as I've been mentioning to you as we've talked about this, is the undercrossing, the BNSF undercrossing, which is called out on that. We're actually going to have a one page that is specific to that particular project as well, which is about a $7.6 million subgroup of this. And it'll be divided into two parts, into the work that would actually be done likely by Burlington Northern themselves, which is about 2.8 million of the total. And then the rest of it would be the roadway improvements to connect SAP Road to Reed Street and fill in that missing gap in that, in that arterial section. So the legislative session starts on the fourteenth, and we are discussing this with Al Aldridge on Friday in the mayor's office. And we'll get this tuned up and out and start pursuing this project in earnest. If you have any questions on it, I'd be glad to answer them. We, in the summary of benefits, have been attempting to highlight the connection of this particular project, its importance with both the Swift Center redevelopment, which has been much talked about tonight, and also with just our general travel, traffic growth in the city, which you're all aware of. I'll be getting new traffic counts sometime in March or April of this year. We've seen them growing, going up a fair amount the last few years. As you know, Jamison in particular, which acts as an east-west alternative to Highway 20, south of Highway 20 is, has seen some uptick. And we also have been following some efforts on the county to respond to the residents over there for the traffic increases on Rhodes Road, all related to just the general traffic in Cedar Woolley. One thing that we discovered in updating this thing, I had our traffic consultant, TSI, take another look at the traffic analysis on this. And I've got this spelled out in one of the benefits there. But the 2036 traffic, which is what we're planning for with this, on Highway 20 is going to be up from today's 20, 21,000 to about 24, 25,000. This, this new route that we're proposing could take up to 5,200 vehicles off of Highway 20, which I mentioned in there, which I just want to clarify for you that this is a tremendous benefit for the city and for the state. Because what happens is the, as the traffic volume grows on Highway 20, because it is a two-lane road, basically, it doesn't stay there. Basically, people will start finding other ways to get around, which increases the pressure on State Street, on Jamison, other streets. And so providing another east-west connection is good for the city as well as for the state, we believe. And that's, that's the case that we're going to be taking forward to the legislature and in the other grant applications. I actually have a detailed chart that we did in the recent update to that traffic analysis that shows the volume changes with and without this project in 2026 throughout the city. And doing this project measurably decreases the pressure on like West State Street, Jamison, and other roads. And so it's just the way this works as traffic spreads out. No doubt, you'll hear from your constituents, why are we building a road to take traffic off of Highway 20? Well, because it affects us directly. And it also allows for us to, in an orderly manner, develop the city, especially with the annexation that John's been talking about to the north on Highway nine. All of that pressure coming down Highway nine currently has one place to, one, a reasonable place to travel to the, to the west, and that's via Highway 20. This provides an alternative before that for the local traffic to be able to get across town, which in addition to the through traffic, you know, a good chunk of the traffic that we see in this downtown area is Cedar Woolley people getting from one end of town to the other. So anyway, I just wanted to let you know, this is where we're heading with this. If you have any comments on it, feel free to email me and those kind of things. This is actually still in draft form. Reichart Nebe, our consultant that's doing the scoping study, is still working on the engineering estimate updates. The ones that are shown here now in the chart are fairly old. There are what's in our transportation plan, and I have been updating them for inflation, but I'm having them do a more detailed look at that cost. And I do expect it's going to go up some, although interestingly enough, the, the undercrossing project, we'd been carrying 7.7 million for that, and their detailed estimate's 7.6. They haven't finished that one. So we were actually okay on that. Maybe we will be on the other ones as well, but that, that will certainly change, and we may tweak some of the benefits, things a little bit more. So anyway, that's all I had for you tonight.
Mark, I know this is way in the future, but to enforce that that is for residential and not an alternative to 20, are we thinking of doing anything like speed bumps or anything like that, too?
Well, the design for this road is going to be what's called...
Ebrocklets aren't impacted.
Yes, thank you. It's going to be what's called a road diet. It's going to be similar to McGargle that you see, and in fact, this is an extension of McGargle. So it won't encourage the bigger vehicles to use it. In fact, we're designing it, you know, with, with traffic calming measures in mind for that. Speed bumps, it will be an arterial street. We wouldn't anticipate those, but for instance, the, the intersection at, at Johnliner and Highway nine, we'll be designing that to discourage larger vehicles. We'll be designing it more for the WB40s, which is, you know, the, not the truck and trailers that you see normally on the route. Anytime you open a new road up, you're going to get some. That's part of the issue on Rhodes Road is some loggers are bypassing the downtown area by going that way and causing a few issues down on that route, which we're talking to the county about, as I mentioned. But to the best we can, we're going to design it so that it's, it's more for the smaller vehicle use and taking that volume and redistributing that in town. Good question.
All right.
I have a question.
Sure. No, go ahead.
I had a question about the residence on, on Johnliner. How are they, are they notified and updated, and how, how is that?
Well, we've been kind of a low-key version of that. This has been, you know, covered in our, our tip for many years. This is not a new project in any way. And we have this in our lobby, and I'll be updating for this new view of it. We do plan a couple of public meetings as the process of the scoping goes on. And people are aware of it. We've had people come in and talk to us about this. I don't expect it's going to be real popular on Johnliner, but as I've mentioned in the past, the way we roll this out is really important. We really need to complete the pedestrian improvements for that in conjunction with opening up this as a new route. It would be difficult to not do that. For instance, if we opened that undercrossing in the new section of road and had not improved, at least got a sidewalk on Johnliner, then we're putting our schoolchildren at risk that walk on the shoulders and down the edge of Johnliner to go to Evergreen and all the rest of that. We're very cognizant of that and plan to phase this, to take that into account.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Thank you, Mark. Aaron?
Well, thank you. Of course, lots going on and all over the city, but tonight I thought I'd focus on the library. At the last meeting, the council requested some additional information and a status update on the library construction project. You have on your dais the budget worksheet that Doug indicated we've been working off of. If you get out your magnifying glasses, there's all sorts of interesting detail here. And I, I won't go through it. I'll just let you look at it. But I guess the purpose of sharing this with you is so you can see where we are in the project, how we've allocated funds, and how they're currently being spent. The other question that came up, of course, is what's going on with all that digging? So where we are right now is we've completed all of the demolition work, and that was within our project budget, which was a hundred thousand dollars. And we were just under a hundred thousand dollars for the removal of both of the buildings and, and the extended excavator rental that went along with some additional digging. What we discovered is we got into the site, it's under the old feed barn. It appears that there may have been some disposal activities over the years. We really can't tell what was going on. We found material that looks like layers of paint. We found old roofing tiles. We found, well, just today, we were digging some test pits, and two of them had saw blades that were, you know, 24-inch diameter that popped out. One of them's under the old State Street road grade and had an 18-inch wooden waterline. So everywhere you go, there's something interesting on this property. And of course, you are all aware that we located three underground storage tanks as part of this. One was a septic tank, one was a decommissioned, very small fuel tank, and the other was a very large concrete tank, a very, very old, large concrete tank. So all of this digging at this point and testing has resulted in additional costs of just about $150,000. That represents about 1,000 tons of material that have been hauled and transported to Roosevelt Regional Landfill, specialized cleaning of that tank that we discovered, the larger 30,000 or so gallon concrete structure, both pumping and pressure washing of that tank, and then a whole slew of laboratory testing. And where we stand today is our most recent series of tests came up all below the Matka Level A for unrestricted land uses, but one. So we took, there was one test that came up above, and that was just barely above the Matka levels for benzoa pyrene. And benzoa pyrene is kind of interesting in that it doesn't have an industrial use, and the source seems to be, you know, burned debris. It's present on your grilled meats, and it's also present in your wood stoves. So, you know, we only have conjecture as to why we would find that, but it certainly has been present in a couple of locations. So after that positive, another, oh, I don't know, probably 200 tons, which is what got us over the 1,000-ton number, was excavated and also hauled off. And at this point, we're, we're looking at the site to try to figure out what additional testing may be necessary and how to address what's left on the site. So that's about all I have on that at this point. There's a range of options, one of which we're looking at fairly closely would be to redesign the stormwater facilities on the site to not attempt to infiltrate through any of the material. It's an interesting site in that once you get to the sand layer, everything's always tested clean, all of our tests. But the sand layer is pretty variable. Much of the site, it's about six feet below current grade. There's a small area where it's about eight feet, and there's probably a third of the site, I would say, where it's less than a foot below finished grade or current grade. So it would be really nice to go back in time to about 1890 or so and see what's going on on that site. State Street, I believe, was built around 1910, and we did some digging under that State Street section and saw a layer that looked like it could have some similar characteristics. We didn't test it, so we don't know. But it's, it's sort of interesting, very random out there. So where we are at this point is our preloaded project is still on hold. It's pending kind of completion of this phase and a path forward. And we'll, we'll be updating you on that as we identify the range of options and have a recommended path forward. The library board will be getting a similar report tomorrow night. We do have one item, though, that we're interested in recommending for action tonight, and that is on the legislative front, Senator Wagner has, has, I guess I would say solicited or indicated to us that he would be very receptive to us making a request for the rest of the funding that he'd asked for last session. So you may recall, Senator Wagner asked for two and a half million. We received one and a half million. He'd like us to ask for the other million, and he'd like to go to bat to get some additional funding for the project. So we've talked that over internally. We've talked that over with the, with the chair of the district board and the librarian and library director, and we're supportive of that. We believe the additional funding would be helpful to the project and specifically would allow us to add about 600 square feet to the western end, which would bring back one of the functional areas that got scaled back as part of the design process. So on the plus side, more functional space, this is the time we're building it. We're pretty unlikely to do a remodel anytime in the near future, so it feels a lot like it's now or not likely ever. On the negative side, this will cost us about 45 to 60 days on our timeline. So we're, we're currently still on the same critical path to an add date in February, even with all of our digging. And I really want to express a lot of appreciation for Mark, who's spent, I don't know, I'm guessing we're into the 100-hour timeframe on this project. Nathan and his crew, especially Travis Wood, who I think just punches in at the excavator and punches out at the excavator now. You know, had we not done this work the way we did it, this all would have become a very mysterious and extremely expensive once we had a general contractor mobilized. So having performed this work internally and going through this discovery phase as we're going through is not fun, don't get me wrong, but I think it couldn't have been done more efficiently any other way. So we're, we're very fortunate to have the crew on board doing the work that's happening. So with that, the, the request tonight would be for council support. I guess I'm looking for a motion to support a legislative ask for, for the original, up to the original amount of two and a half million that was requested last year. And we'd like to make that request formally to the senator, and he'd like to go to bat for us. Of course, I'll answer any questions I can. If you ask about hexavalent chromium?
Yes, I do.
Problematic for me, but we'll give it a shot.
Are there any questions?
Yes.
Okay.
So a couple. So there will be a delay to get to the 90% design.
Now, we're at the 90% design now, essentially. So the delay would, would be the development of an additive alternate to the bid package. So essentially stepping back, building the 600-foot area, and, you know, that, that's the 45 to 60-day delay.
So speaking of stepping back and reevaluating, we have a pretty big hole in the ground there, and a person from the community has suggested that that now be part of a design feature of the, of the library. Is that, you know, what are we thinking there, Mayor?
Well, I'll let the mayor answer that.
Actually, no. We'd like to fill the hole.
So we have looked at that. And first, we've talked over, over the design phase and before about a basement potentially for storage. But, you know, we can fill that hole for, I think, our, our unit prices, $10... But, you know, we can fill that hole for, I think, our unit price is $10 a ton, $11 a ton.
So with some clean infill and tuck it in.
And, you know, much of that was going to have to be done anyway as part of the preload. So, you know, you're looking at, even if it's 1,000 tons in addition, which it isn't quite because of the topography of the site, but even if it was 1,000 tons, that's, you know, $110,000 versus the cost of a whole basement.
And then where is that money coming from? That, because is it in a contingency plan here? I can't read the two-point font at the moment. Is there a grant we went for? Is there, are we scaling back the building in general because of this find?
Yeah. So no grant, although had we known we were bumping into this sort of issue, there may have been grant opportunities, maybe starting a year or 18 months ago. So much like you heard from the port tonight, you know, they're a year into chasing funds or two years into chasing funds that they may not see for another year or two. It takes a while. So where we're at at the moment is we have built into this budget a sort of an unrestricted reserve that we've identified. You'll see it in category six, reserve for utilities, fees, and other of 133,000. We've spent 24,000 on of that so far, and that 24,000 was bringing the waterline across State Street in conjunction with the State Street reconstruction project. So there's about $110,000 there that's currently unallocated. I think maybe 10,000 of it could go to Puget Sound Energy. So I think there's about 100,000 there. We have, in the category three section on construction, we do have a construction contingency of $453,000. So at this point, those two areas would be the probable areas to look at, you know, without affecting the project. In addition, under our agreement with the library district, we've been placing $30,000 a month into a construction reserve fund. So in 2017, 360,000 went into that fund, and that's reflected in this budget. Under the agreement, those dollars switch from being available for construction and become part of a bond payment fund, if you will, in timing with the debt repayment. So we're still working on the debt repayment timing, but we believe that 180,000, up to 360,000 of that money for 2019 could also be part of this project. So we've got some flexibility to cover these costs, and at this point, it's those three areas that we're looking at to address the environmental costs. We're obviously not done. You know, that 150,000 is a pretty accurate cost to date, but, you know, it costs $1,500 every time we take a test of the laboratory. You know, it adds up fast.
Right.
And every ton we take away is running us about $70.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. So the motion, would somebody like? Okay. So we had it first by Councilwoman Kelly and seconded by Councilwoman Den Lee to move forward to ask the state legislature for the $1 million money.
Is, what's the added cost to our lobbying efforts to ask for that million?
So I don't actually think there will be an added cost.
Great.
I will confirm that when we talk to Al on Friday, but my expectation is there will be no added cost, and in fact, a portion of our currently contracted lobbying work will become part of our project partnership cost.
All right. Any other questions? All in favor? Opposed? All right.
Great. And Doug's not able to be here tonight. I'll give you the super brief finance report. Carol Nipper is now on day nine in the Cedarly Finance Department. Things are going well. I know he's much appreciated her expertise in EMS and has been able to take several large files from his office and hand them to her. At one point, she showed me one and wondered where the file was normally kept, and I chuckled and said, "Well, that one lived on Doug's desk, at least the last six or eight months." So we'll find a spot wherever you want to put it, Carol. So things are going well. I think probably Doug's anticipating near the end of January being able to begin cross-training with her into the finance department duties, so front counter, and she'll be trained to be able to do the city's payroll as well. So one of our goals in 2019 is for Teresa to take a week vacation when paychecks are due. That's a big deal. That's something she hasn't done. I think she did it once for a wedding, if I recall correctly, in the last five years. So that'd be pretty exciting. And of course, it's a year-end wrap-up. Doug's about to close things so we can get the fourth quarter done. You'll see that on the agenda for next meeting. And also finishing the 2019 budget, the narrative form budget, so that can be produced and back to everybody. So lots going on really everywhere. You may have noticed posting in the newspaper, we've got a position open for the solid waste employee that was authorized in the budget. We're also anticipating at this point that an existing solid waste employee is likely to be promoted into the IT specialist position, so we may be hiring two solid waste employees at the same time. So we posted to give ourselves flexibility in that area. So we'll keep you posted as that progresses. But it's been pretty exciting with all these new people coming to work at Cedar Wully. Thank you.
All right. Jerry?
Just in the essence of time, I just want to say one thing. I want to welcome our firefighter, firefighter paramedics and say thank you to all of the city staff that made that happen. It was truly remarkable that we pulled that off in such a short timeframe. So very pleased to have them here. I think the service to the citizens will be greatly improved.
Thank you. Chuck?
You have a couple of questions, and maybe one of the bog ones over there can answer. What's going on with the Market Foods building? And anybody have an update on the Bowling Alley project?
So I'll start with the Bowling Alley. We have permits for that. They're not entirely clear if they plan on bringing the Bowling Alley itself back to life quite yet, but they're doing kitchen work to create a restaurant inside and potentially move, it's owned by the, a coffee roaster. She may move her very, very small operation into there in the future also, but right now it's looking at being a restaurant. And then as far as the marketplace, it's been purchased, and the property owner is looking through the property, trying, assessing what they have, assessing the structure of the building, and working with potential tenants of the building. And depending on what tenant they get in, they may reopen the building, reuse that building, or add on to various parts of it. It's all still very early to say.
Yeah. I was in hopes that thing would go away. You know, it's ugly, ugly.
I have heard that plans to improve the aesthetic appeal of the building is part of the ongoing plan.
Thank you, John. Anybody, anybody know, you don't know what's going to go in that building, right? No? Well, anyway, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Jermaine?
So I don't know if anyone was aware that Jim Perkins passed away a couple of weeks ago, I guess, it was somewhere around there, and that I just wanted to announce that his service will be held this Saturday at Eagle Haven from 12 to 3:00. It was in the paper, I think, just a few days ago. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Jermaine. Brenda?
Mark? I just wanted to check what the status is on getting the stripes down on State Street. I know it's weather-related, but are we looking at springtime, or do you think we might get a window?
If they get a window, they'll come in and do it. Weather is probably 75% of it, and part of it has been the schedule of the strippers because they had that strike last summer. They were way behind at the end of the year, so when we finished, they weren't available, and then the weather turned. So I know David's pushing on them to get it done. They haven't seen it yet.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Carl?
Just want to echo Councilmember Couch's thanks and also the joy of bringing in, it looked like eight firefighter paramedics and welcome them to the city. Did want to compliment the response time and effectiveness of our public safety officers from the fire department, from the police, and also Public Works when we had the last big windstorm that took down a dug fur on the 900 block of State Street, and that straddled both sides of State Street across the power lines. And, you know, hearing dueling chainsaws at midnight to take care of that, to reopen this street, but also just keeping everyone safe around that, that there was three dangling transformers there. So just want to say thank you for keeping everyone safe.
All right. Judith?
I don't have anything more.
Okay. All right. Paula?
Well, I agree with both Councilman Couch and Deion regarding our paramedics. I think that's great. The other thing is, is I'm glad that Jermaine did mention the Perkins Memorial because I know I plan to attend. He has been a marvelous member of our community, even if he is outside of the city limits and will be missed. The other thing is, is that tomorrow night is also an opportunity to honor Rob Martin from Chinook Enterprises. He is retiring, and there is an event planned for him out at McIntyre Hall. So if anyone wants to attend, that'd be great. I'm also looking forward to Woodman C's BYK and Cedron Technologies having a multi-chamber after-hours next month on February 14th. And just want to let you guys know, I think you've done a marvelous job on everything you've worked on so far, and I'm looking forward to more good things in the future.
All right. Thank you. Well, I have to say that I have to echo my councilmembers' thanks, the EMS fire bringing them on board. This is really historic. It was very much historic, and I was actually there on the 31st when they were starting the shift. It was pretty exciting. I do want to thank Dean and Frank and Doug and Aaron and all the commissioners for their support, especially Commissioner Janikin, Commissioner Weason, and also the mayors and the other. The county, this couldn't have happened without the cities coming together. It's not just what happened in Cedar Wully, but it's what happened in Mount Vernon, Anacortes, Burlington. This just could not have happened. This is a remarkable event because you had all these entities coming together, moving forward in the same direction, and we have started something that's really grand, something that's a little bit different from anything that's out there, and so far, it's ran smooth. It's working really well. So I just want to thank everybody who was involved in that. And so now we will move on to public comment. It is 8:23, and I'm going to open it to public comment. Please give your name and address and try to keep it within three minutes. Is there anyone for public comment? I'll close it at 8:23. And now we'll move on to public hearings. So before I open that up for public comment, nobody signed up, but I will open it up, see if anybody does want to comment. I'm going to turn it over to John. John, do you want to talk about this?
All right. So I've been giving periodic updates on this annexation process that started, gosh, well over a year ago.
I think it was actually back when Chuck and I were on the planning commission.
No, no, no. It wasn't that, oh, well, back then, that was, yes, this, to give a little bit further backstory, this area was added to the urban growth area in 2016, June of 2016. And prior to that, it took about three or four years to go through the process to add property to the city's urban growth area. So this has been a project that started so long ago that I completely forgot about the urban growth area expansion part of it. Thank you very much, councilmember, for reminding me about that. So several months after June 2016, property owner of three properties requested to come in, owner of about 20 acres. Council asked that staff in that annexation petitionee work with other property owners in the urban growth area to see if there was any interest in other property owners coming into the urban growth, coming into the city limits at the same time as the annexation so we can, you know, consolidate process, and we don't have several different property owners coming in and wanting to annex after we've just completed an annexation. So, believe it or not, working with property owners to, on issues such as land use, doesn't move very quick. The annexation petitioner put a lot of effort going and speaking with property owners, and other property owners went and spoke to their neighbors, and eventually, we're able to put together a, an area that is consistent of property owners that want to come in to the city. There's, the proposed annexation itself, as visually seen on a map, is on page 107 of your, of your packet. It consists of 71.4 acres. Of that 71.4 acres, 45.9, when annexed, if annexed, would be residential five zone. 17.2 acres would be residential one zone. 6.5 acres would be mixed commercial. And for those of you who can do math really well in your head quickly, that's actually only 69.6 acres. The rest of the 1.8 acres is right-of-way, so road, the roads in between the properties. So all of that area is what's proposed to be taken into the city limits. The process from here is, now that we've received the annexation petition, we've sent the petition itself to the county assessor's office and asked them to confirm that the property is, that the signatures make up at least 60% of the value of the properties per the assessor property information and assessed values. We received that information, and so now we're ready to go to the public hearing process. At this point, we'll take public comments from anybody that has any interest in this. And then after the public comments today, the city council can pass a resolution stating that the city is interested in annexing the area as shown in the map. This, the resolution, you know, if the, if the council chooses to pass the resolution, the resolution doesn't actually create the annexation, so it won't happen. It's a resolution saying we intend to, and that's necessary to send to the Saskatchewan County Boundary Review Board, which is an independent body that will, has the opportunity to review the merits of the, of the annexation and look at the boundaries and see if it's logical boundaries, and they have several other criteria by which they can look at annexations and determine if the boundaries need to be changed or if the annexation should or should not happen. Generally, they just review it to make sure that it's logical and that it doesn't hurt any other districts that might depend on. Oftentimes, fire districts will, will battle over property. We don't anticipate any sticky situations like this, but this is part of the process. So it'll go to the Boundary Review Board. They'll have 45 days then to decide whether or not they're going to invoke their authority and hold more public hearings. If after 45 days they say they're not going to do anything, then it can come back to the city, and then I will prepare an ordinance for the city council to take a vote on. And at that time, that ordinance would enact an annexation. on. And after that time, that ordinance would enact an annexation. So we're still, even if the council were to pass something today, we're still a good two months away from an actual ordinance that would enact the, any annexation. So that's the process in a nutshell. So I entertain any questions from the council right now. If I've left anything out, I apologize, and then we can open the public hearing.
Carl?
Oh, thanks for all the hard work, and obviously, the years of hard work that's gone through this. I was wondering if we could pull up a little bit and talk about what R1 is, what R5 is, that we're not, this is not an urban village that we're talking about, that this is, what exactly those Rs stand for? And then if you could, the terms I'd like to hear is, what is the maximum possibility of residences in that 70-plus acres? Thank you.
Okay, so residential one is a residential designation, so it's generally residence, single-family residence would be allowed in that neighborhood. The density would be one unit per acre, and that's the area that is west of State Route 9 and north of Basset Road, generally around the Bottomless Lake area. It's sort of a unique area with terrain and, and a lake, so lower density was, was determined to be the best for the ecological, it's actually called the R1 environmentally constrained zone. So that's why that would be, that would be the likely use one acre lots. Under planned residential development, you could still get your one unit per acre, but there might be some clustering to have smaller lots in some areas and larger lots in other areas, and that would actually be really welcome use of the property, because then you could move the higher densities away from sensitive areas, and so that's the R1. The R5 is one of the most standard residential neighborhoods in Cedar Woolly. It's five units per acre, generally is the allowed density. If done under a planned residential development, you can get five units per acre. Otherwise, if you do a standard subdivision in that area, it'd be 8,400 square foot lot minimums, which is a little bit more than four units per acre. So that encompasses most of the area. And then there's a small piece at the corner of Basset Road, southward to our fire station, and on the east side of the creek, west side of State Route 9, also known as North Township Street, that would be mixed commercial. It's a small enough area that it was envisioned as, you know, a small convenience store to serve the northern end of the area. It wouldn't, it's not a Walmart size or anything like that. It would be a small commercial node serving the northern part of the city, and possibly residence north end State Route 9. So the number of housing units that would be possible is a little bit tough to say. As I said, there's 17 acres in the R1, so that'd be 17 units in that area. That's, that's an easy calculation. The seven, the 45 acres in the R5 would be, you know, 45 times 5 under the best-case scenario, but that doesn't account for critical areas that might exist. So that number would come down, and believe it or not, I actually have to use a calculator.
So we're thinking about 250?
It's 225 units.
Well, plus a 17.
Plus 17, so we're looking at about 242 units at max. There are critical areas which are going to bring that number down a little bit.
All right, are there any other questions? If not, I'm going to open. Are you, are you through, John? Have you finished what you wanted to say?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, didn't want to cut you off. I will, there were no names, nobody showed an interest in wanting to make a statement. However, I will open it up for those who may want to come up and make a statement regarding the annexation. Again, give your name and address, and try to keep it to three minutes. It's 8:34.
Hello, my name's Rusty Doble. I live at 7842 State Route 9, and I would not like to be part of the annexation that is proposed on the east side, on the lakeside, on Harmonic Drive.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Nora Jensen. I live at 7934 State Route 9, and I would like to, I would like to see this. And my excitement is, is when the speed limit would be reduced on Highway 9 later on. I would greatly look forward to that, and I think this is a positive move. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Kyle Swanson. I live at 7886 in between those two properties. I just have more questions about, it's a heavily wooded area, and we're in the county, and I depend on burning my land waste. Is there possibilities of having, like being grandfathered in there if I'm in the county, and being now up into the city where that would be done? And I want to, I ask some information about my requirement to be hooked up into city water and stuff like that, how much I'd have to pay, and information like, like that, if possible. Thank you.
So, John, do you want to answer the first question?
I'd rather answer the second question than the first one.
Okay.
I think they're in the UGA, they're in the urban growth area now. I didn't get your address or parcel number.
7886.
Seven, 786?
7886.
Oh, 7886.
So I have two parcels. P3, third block down, left and right.
Well, so the answer to the first question is, if you're in the urban growth area, or if you're annexed into the city, you're not allowed to do outdoor burning for purposes other than personal enjoyment. And that's a regulation of the Northwest Clean Air Agency. It's imposed statewide through various clean air agencies, so that's beyond the city's control, and there's not a grandfathering mechanism for that. It applies to the city, too. We happen to own some property that's outside of the city limits, and we can burn on that, but we can't burn in the city, other than our old campfires to go out and enjoy things. So if you're cleaning your land, do it in the form of mostly cordwood and marshmallows, and have fun doing it. The second question is, there is no mandatory requirement to connect to the city's, to public water, which is owned by the Public Utility District, or to city sewer. Our current code allows, if sewer comes up, you know, within 200 feet of your property, you may get a notice that would require you to connect within 90 days, but our code currently has, and has had for years, an opt-out provision that allows you to, you know, certify that your septic system is working, and until such time as you subdivide, you sell, you die, you, your septic system fails, there's some triggering conditions, you're able to keep that. You do lose a decommissioning credit, so it costs you a little bit more later, but it's, you get to drive your boat on that. So, you know, the only, you'll find the taxes, it's worth comparing, because it's kind of interesting. I think you'll see the city taxes are a little bit lower than the rural taxes, and you, you know, you can't go shoot in your backyard. I think that's actually about the only thing that's different, is if you want to go out and target shoot in your backyard, you can do that in the county, and you really can't do that in the city. That's, that's my analysis of the difference. You will get, most likely, a faster response time if you dial 911, just because of your proximity to, to us.
All right, thank you. Anyone else for comment? All right, then I will close the public hearing at 8:39, and I will ask the council if they are wanting to make a motion, it's actually on page 96 of your packet, make a motion to pass resolution, and this will be 1014-19, to approve proceeding with the annexation of properties as shown on the annexation map, exhibit B to the resolution, and forward required materials to the Boundary Review Board.
Madam Mayor, I have a comment.
Yes.
I would just ask, my preference on this, I guess, to the council would be that we wait one meeting, and I would just ask if anybody who is opposed to this, that lives in the area, if you would email your concerns, or reach out to the city council, so we could take that into consideration.
All right. What's council's wish here?
I agree with Jared myself.
Okay. Jermaine's agreeing with Jared.
Yes, it is first reading, so I don't think we need to rush into...I know it's been going on for years, I know. Believe me, I know.
That's fine.
Question. If we were to take a pause for two weeks, how does that affect the things on the county side with their scheduling?
Oh, well, the BRB's not really waiting for us, so...
Okay, so they don't meet once a year type of thing?
No.
Right, okay. And then, I know we had one person speak against, this is the first time I've heard someone speak against. I was hoping that they would reveal more of their reasoning for that, but it is their business whether or not they want to or not. Please, and thank you.
Do you want to come forward?
Thank you.
I'm intrigued. Rusty, 07842, so I've lived at the property for 45 years. It's a habitat for elk to come down through the 25 acres that's directly across the street from me. There's coyotes, there's deer. Half of that land is wetlands. On the north end of it, it has a drainage ditch that runs through the middle of it. Developing it would be at the south end towards Basset Road, which would be fine. I just personally do not want to be in the city. I like where I'm at, I like my rights in the county. It's a protected area, have a private lake in the back. It's not going to benefit the city, to be quite honest. You're not going to gain 250 homes, you're not. That's primarily it.
So what I'm hearing is, you're enjoying that quality of life that you're there for?
Yeah, except for the speed on the highway.
Well, I appreciate you coming back up to the microphone. I have a better understanding.
Thank you. All right, so is it the council's wish, then, to take a pause?
Yes.
Yes.
All in favor? Not just you, all in favor? Opposed? Okay. And that is it. We do not have any new business? Is there any questions regarding the information-only items?
There is more.
I'm sorry?
There is new business, the plat of Woodrow Place, item two.
Woodrow, yeah.
I'm sorry?
New business, item number two.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, there it is, okay. So the preliminary approval of the plat of Woodrow Place, all right, and this is a first reading, and this would be, John?
Yep. So I'm going to go, I'm going to find the page that we're on here. It is page 119 of your report, and the map itself, so this is a seven-lot subdivision. So I'd like to point out the map looking forward on here. Page 133 shows graphically what the plat is. So we received an application for a seven-lot application on SAP Road. It has gone to the hearings examiner for a public hearing, and the hearing examiner made a recommendation to approve the plat as shown on the map on page 133 of your, of your report, with some minor conditions. The recommendations are in the, the hearing examiner, the recommendation, which is also included in the packet. This is a fairly simple, short plat, or long plat of seven units. Don't have a whole lot to say about it, because it's kind of a small plat. If there's any, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer. I do have one request, I'm going to bring this back for a second, for a second read. I'd like the council to consider putting in on the consent agenda unless you'd like to hear it again.
Are there any questions? Paula? All right, Tim? We'll have you give your full name and your address, please, Tim.
And address?
Yeah.
Okay, Tim Woodmancy, 24393 Gunderson Ridge Drive. So you, what do you, where do you want to hear it from?
I'm actually very pleased with the work you guys do. I just wondered if you had how you were addressing your mitigation.
So we actually did a wetland, a full wetland study and delineation, and found no wetlands on the property. So there is no mitigation that we will be doing there. We plan on building and selling seven homes. We're kind of in the planning stages of which homes we're going to be building there, but we're really excited to break ground and, and get some home, some more homes for sale here in Cedar Woolly.
I think I can answer your, your question about the wetlands. As part of all land use applications like this, we require the applicant to have critical areas reconnaissance done to see if there's any critical areas, such as wetlands, steep or unstable slopes, creek corridors that have habitat. And that's, this, the report that was done for this property is on, is exhibit D, and it's on page 134. And the findings of this report was that there is no, no regulation, no wetlands that need any definition as a wetland. No.
All right, Carl?
And these are all at-market rate homes that you're proposing to put there?
Yes, they will be.
All right. Any other questions?
I just have a comment. Madam Mayor, if we, I agree with what John proposed, that we put this on the consent agenda.
All right.
When it comes up.
All right, so thank you, Tim. Thank you for coming up.
Thank you.
If there are no objections, this will be put on the consent agenda. The next time you see it, it will be on the consent agenda. Okay. All right, that is that. So one last question again, information-only items, any comments or concerns? Anything for the good of the order?
Madam Mayor, I move to adjourn.
All right. Second?
Second.